I can go ahead and call our meeting to order because it's 5:01. That's okay with everybody? And we will just begin our meeting this evening with a moment of silence. Thank you, and you don't have to rise, but you can say the pledge of allegiance with me, or you can just let me say it because I know we're all on Zoom or Google, and it may take a minute, but I'm just going to go ahead and start. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And then I'll just go ahead and read our mission statement tonight, and that is that the Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. So the first item on our agenda then is the information from individuals and delegations. And I would ask our board secretary Pam Arndorfer if there is any information that has come from the public that should be addressed tonight.
I did not receive any comments for tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. So then we can move on to our consent agenda tonight, which includes three items. Item A are the minutes of the October 12, 2020 regular board meeting. Item B are the personnel appointments and adjustments. Item C are the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings. So are there any items that board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to place items A, B, and C on the table. Thank you, Jessie.
Second.
Second, is that India?
Yes.
I thought so. I looked down for a minute, and then I thought, that's why I lost it. So Pam, it was Jessie and then India. So all those in favor of approval then of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to our superintendent's report, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Lindeman.
Wonderful, thank you. So just a few things tonight. So first of all, I will address the return to learn, which is front and center in every bit of the work that we do, probably is taking the biggest part of it. So just a refresher for not only the board members, but for anybody who may be viewing this after the fact. So our return to learn plan came about from, we had six committees that were working on the work. And so the different, the various committees, and so we had, so we had the Health and Safety Committee, we had the Equity Committee, the Infrastructure Committee, the Achievement, yeah, the Achievement Committee, and data analysis and so forth. So all of these committees continue to, we have their plan in place. We continue to update it as we need to. And so I know that one of the board members today had asked for some, like a future achievement, some, a report on some of the achievement data, which we're definitely going to provide to you. I thought maybe we could even do that at one of our next meetings. And we've had a couple of different requests for some information on how it's going. There's like even interesting things, like I was just talking with Marty Metcalf today. And now that we've got basically one trimester under our belt, we're super close to one trimester. We are able to sort of predict out and project out like where we are right now after, well, I think Stephanie, are we 11 weeks, just are we 11 weeks in? Just nod your head. I think that's where we are, right, 11 weeks. And so like he was just talking with me, like things like soap dispensers. You know, now we're this far in, and so making an order for the rest because we can kind of now predict and project where we are. We're still working heavily on virtual learning. We've had, I shared a little bit at the last board report, and I've certainly shared a lot in the weekly updates to the board. We are making a ton of improvements on, or working to make improvements. I personally have been talking with quite a few families this last couple of weeks. We've had teams of people that have called. We had approximately, from the last survey, we had approximately 50 parents who had asked to be called. And so we've worked through and called all of the parents and just had a conversation. I took some of those, Stephanie took some. We had a variety of people who just took some of those names, and we just started calling them and talking with them. And so I found that very helpful, just to have those conversations with people. You know, what's going really well? I was, you know, we even had somebody who had written a letter at the last board meeting that was shared aloud, and that person called me and said, hey, I think that maybe the letter made it sound like everything was not going well. Pam, I think, received that letter, but he just wanted to clarify. He said the bulk of it is going extremely well. He said, I was just sharing some of the things that hadn't gone well. So we were able to talk with him further. Well, you know, we really, we want the whole thing to go well. And so continuing to work with them, we have, I've mentioned a couple of times with the board and with others that we are working on the high school schedules. We currently have just two buildings that have not come back for their in-person. For in-person, we've had a couple of buildings that have not returned to five days. And so we're watching that very carefully. We chose to go with the every other schedule, every other day schedule, the A B schedule, we call it, for east and west for a variety of reasons. But now that, again, we're now that we're 11 weeks into it, we feel like we know a lot. We had done a survey, and you know, we had looked at, you know, we had asked some questions about, you know, when would you be ready to come back? We had tossed out a date of as early as November. And there was, it was very clear that we had some more work to do prior to that time. So we've sent something out to all of our families and have said we are looking at the possibility of, you know, gearing up, like what would it look like if we could come back at semester? So we're still looking at that. That is not an announcement by, I mean, I'm not ready to declare, hey, this is what we're doing. But that's what we shared with families, that that would be a potential option. And so we're working on all of those things, really trying to keep things focused. I guess, I know you can see me on the screen, but here's what I would say at the very beginning of the year. I feel like health and safety, if you think of this like a balance, we really weighted health and safety very heavily at the very beginning. And we had, the student achievement and the learning was super important, but we knew that we needed to keep our kids safe. And because we were operating in a, you know, quite unfamiliar territory, we really felt like we needed to put a lot of focus on that. But you know, as Stephanie has shared with, you know, with all of her instructional staff and all of teachers, we really feel like we do have some routines very well laid out. We feel like it's time for us to just really tip those scales and really working on prioritizing the instruction. If you are in the buildings, our principals are doing a lot of walkthroughs right now. They're in the classrooms, they're giving feedback on instruction. Whereas at the very beginning of the year, they were in classrooms too, but they were giving more feedback on, you know, I think we all know that we had, Stephanie and Kingsley and Marla, Pagean and I had gone out. We were in all of the classrooms, but our feedback again was on the safety of the kids. We were looking at classrooms or classroom arrangements. And so now, as we're going out, I was in a building today just doing some walkthroughs, and we're really looking at that instructional piece. And so I feel like we're doing some data analysis. Stephanie and her team are really working hard on the fall assessment data. We had the FAST test, which we've talked about before. That is going, that's K through six. And I happen to know because I have a sixth grader. And so I got a letter in the mail to talk about FAST scores and where the FAST scores are, where his FAST scores are. So that's, you know, that's something that we're working on, getting that information out to families, and then starting to do some of that progress monitoring. We also have our first round of Edify benchmark data. And Edify, for any viewers, Edify is just the company that we use to do these benchmark assessments. So we've done the first set of assessments and are gearing up for additional assessments. And so taking that data, analyzing where are kids, how much, you know, is there regression from the summer? Is there regression from the spring months when kids weren't here? If so, how much for which group? And so really looking at that. So that's just kind of a little bit of a report on the return to learn. I know I talked about soap and virtual learners and achievement gap and all of those things. But really, that whole, that whole, that whole gamut is the return to learn because it's everything that we're doing this year that is in response to kids being out for a while and coming back. A second thing I would share is that tonight at 7 o'clock, we have a Mark Perna presentation. Mark is, Mark Perna has worked with a variety of districts all across the nation. He has worked with Waterloo Schools and specifically with our Career Center. He has a presentation that is free to the public, and you can log in. It's called "Unleashing Passion, Purpose, and Performance in Younger Generations." And so he is going to do this, this presentation. He worked, actually Jeff and I and some other people, I can't remember if there was anybody else that, here, I'm looking on the screen, if there was anybody who was with us. We actually traveled down to Davenport. He was hosted by John Deere and Davenport Schools. So we traveled down to listen to his presentation, and it was pretty amazing. So he has really great ideas about how do we make sure that we are, his title's right. I mean, unleashing the passion in students, taking their skills, their interests, and really moving those into a career so that we can move students toward that next school, that post-secondary opportunity. That really, I guess, that springboards to one other comment I would make. I am personally working with our counselor teams this year and last year, for that matter. And so one of the things that we're working on district-wide is really what we're calling this career development ladder. So we're talking about how do we make sure that we are giving kids exposure to careers? How are we making sure that those, that we look at their interests and their skills and their aspirations, and then taking that into a career, a potential career field? Looking at how that, what that plan would look like, and then also giving them work-based experiences. And so we talk, when I say a career ladder, and I know I'm doing a lot on the screen here, but we're talking about a ladder that takes kindergartners, a potential kindergartner who wants to be a babysitter or a doctor, and taking them to a 12th grader who knows what they want to be, and they have, you know, a plan to get there. And so that's really what, that ties into what the Mark Perna presentation is about tonight. But really, that's, that's our work with the counselors and with our classroom teachers and with our administrators, making sure we're doing that. So that's another thing. Another quick update, I believe that our public will be seeing some information very soon. I did share some things with our staff this last week about snow days and some potential options for how we would handle snow days. And the reason I bring that up now is that the governor and the Iowa Department of Education gave schools latitude in how to make up their school days. In Iowa, it has never been permissible or legal for schools to do a virtual, to have students learn at home at that time. So if we didn't have a school day, it couldn't count. Even if the students were doing some work at home or whatever that might be, it couldn't count as one of our days. So this year is the first years in history that we have that opportunity to do that. So what we're looking at right now is what would our plan be? I've been, what would our plan be, not Plan B, Plan BE? What should our plan look like? And so we are working with, Stephanie has worked with other leaders from other districts across the state of Iowa. I'm talking with other superintendents. I put something out to the staff that, you know, one of the options that we're considering that actually has some viability, we have a few snow days built into our calendar. So what if we just use those? If we missed a couple of days, we went ahead and used those snow days that were already in the calendar. But what, what happens if we have excessive snow days? Let's say we have five days or 10 days, I think, I don't know when was that. I can't remember how many, did we have nine days a couple of years ago, nine, I think? So what happens then? Would we just continue tacking them on, or would we employ virtual learning? Which again, for the first time in Iowa's history, has been a legal viable option. So we aren't, again, I'm not ready to unveil anything yet because we're still getting feedback and we're still working out some of the details. But I just mentioned that because I think it's important for people to know that that is certainly in the works. And then last, I would share that we have, Waterloo will be excited to welcome Director Anne Lebo. She is the Director of Education, and she will be spending some time in Waterloo Schools, doing some looking around. I actually took a phone call the other day, and it was from the governor. And she was, she was talking about, you know, she's reaching out to schools, how are you guys doing? And, and she had mentioned that Director Lebo would like to come and look around. And so I think that's going to be a really exciting time. So lots and lots and lots of things going on behind the scenes and in front of the scenes. So lots going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. I appreciate that. Okay, so we're not at the board table, so I'm going to try to remember. I think I started with India last week, or two weeks ago. So for, for information from board members, I'll start on the other side with Lyle.
I guess a meeting should be my first step. I had an opportunity to go to the Pella, tour the Pella Career Academy in Pella, Iowa. It's a regional academy to a limited degree, several surrounding districts, and it also serves Pella Christian. Brad and a couple other, their architects from the Des Moines office were there as well, just to see the facilities they have, the programs they have. And in particular, the programs we're interested in, how well their, what their facilities look like and how well they supported the programs. So their district about a third the size of Waterloo, so it's a smaller program. Probably their number one most impressive was ag science, and that encompassed a lot of things, horticulture, diesel mechanics, animal science, so a number of things there. They just had an outstanding instructor that was a former precision ag guy. So he had unique skills there and seemed to have it really going. Associated with that is their FFA program, and they have about 35 students in there. So that's, that was fairly impressive. The other program was welding with Vermeer there. Basically, well, all the programs are sort of apprenticeship focused. And so that one happened to be with Vermeer, but they also have Pella Window. So their industrial tech department was, you know, mostly carpenter-based, associated with Pella Window. Overall, all the facilities was a modern facility. It looked, looked well, well-designed. Repurposed to some degree already. They had an automotive program that they no longer have. But everything was basically too small. They didn't anticipate the expansion of those areas. For example, in the welding area with Vermeer, they had 12 welding stations. There were two things there in which their original facility was not big enough. One is because they're apprenticeship-based, not only for Vermeer but other ones, every company basically brings in their own steel, the specific type of steel that they want the students to learn how to weld in order for their apprenticeship to begin. So again, the storage was grossly underestimated for that reason. And then Vermeer just has donated an automatic robotic welding machine. So in terms of not only manual welding, the students can learn how to program the robotics and then, and then do the analysis to make sure all the welds are x-rayed appropriately to make sure they're, they're good welds. And again, they really don't have space in their program for that. So they weren't anticipating that expansion either. So that was generally, one of the big takeaways is even though they thought they had everything designed large enough, it wasn't. Let me see. I don't. Yeah, I don't recall any, too many other highlights. They certainly liked the program. It was a building that was disconnected, or a standalone building. And they did that because they wanted the focus on the regional center as opposed to associated with Pella, Pella High School. But in retrospect, they said that was a mistake. They would much prefer to be, be physically connected somehow to, to the high school because it's a little too, too distant, too remote. Communications and so forth were not as good. They had only one real classroom, classroom that the shop trades would go to. So that's a little bit of an issue. So they shared that, and that worked sort of, but they wish they had some more dedicated classrooms. So overall, it was a very good, very interesting. The campus looks very, very nice. They're right in the middle of town, so they don't have the luxury of, you know, much outside storage. And we really don't want that either. But, but we've got a little more space between us and the local house at the occupied residential area. So, so there were a lot of good takeaways there. It was very well worth going down to. My second item was, I just, I mean, do we have any objective data yet on student performance? And if not, when, when do we actually anticipate to say, relatively speaking, this is the group that's doing very well? This is a group that's doing okay? And this is a group that we really need to substantially address?
Lyle, how long has it been open again? What was, how long they been doing this?
Pella.
Pella, correct.
I guess it's five or six years. I'm not real sure about that part.
Jane, did you want to, I think I heard you say that there was some data that's just been starting with the Edify stuff and the FAST tests. Did you want to reply anymore to that, or?
Yeah, I was just, I, you know, I don't have it in front of me right now, Lyle. And so I do think that we are learning a lot about where gaps might be. And the one thing that we're, we're also doing is comparing that to some other districts. I was just talking with the superintendent and other districts and saying, you know, here's what we're finding, is that what you're finding? And so we can, we can provide some, we can provide some insight on that in a summary, like in a summary document so that you can see where some of that is. We, we're, we are definitely noticing some gaps. And Stephanie, I don't want to, you know, I, we can, we can certainly do that at a different time so that we can have time to prepare for, prepare for some of that data. But yeah, we, Lyle, we are learning, we are learning some things about where things, where it stands, where we need to target our efforts, where we need to focus.
My only comment to that is, I don't really care if other districts are doing bad. That doesn't justify us to do a bad in any of these areas. And a lot of them.
And I hope you didn't hear me say that. I wasn't, I think there is some, some wisdom in talking with districts about what's happening and what they're doing. But no, for sure, that's just, that's just because sometimes there's some strength in, like if we're finding out something that's not, you know, we're, we have a group that is not doing well or hasn't done well or didn't fare very well during the summer, and they come back. So sometimes we talk with other districts, are you finding that as well? And then what are you doing just to get ideas? No, I hope you did not hear me say that.
Thanks for making the road trip to Pella.
Yeah.
Good, good. All right, we can keep.
I feel annoyed.
All right, we can keep on with our information. Let's see, Stacy, you're next.
Okay, just a couple of things. First, I know that Jane and her team have really done a lot with virtual. And I know that, I appreciate that, and I know that the parents do. I'm still hearing a lot of feedback from them, which I think is good. So I would encourage the parents to please continue reaching out for help. We just had one, we're trying to figure out how to come back at the trimester. So it's just these things that we haven't done yet. So if parents, please, let us know, and we'll do what we can. And we'll pass it to Jane, and she'll do what she can. I wanted to say that I really appreciated, both as a parent and a board member, that we had the option to do virtual conferences. I have two children at one of the high schools, so we had 10 conferences. Thankfully, they shared three teachers, so that took a little off. So our Thursday, the 15th, was conferences on and off from 9:45 a.m. till 5:15 p.m. We did it from home. So that was probably the best day of conferences I've ever had. And then finally, as we're moving into just regular flu season, in a sharp increase in COVID cases in the country, in Iowa. Here in Blackout County, there's been 403 new cases in the past seven days. So I'm just feeling very, very cautious. I know that we've been talking about what to do with the A B for high school. And I, I'm just saying that my opinion is I'm feeling very, very cautious. We've had somebody in our family, not my close family, but who passed away from COVID in the summer. So it's not a joke, you know, it's a big deal. I think about the, the way that they are at lunch right now and how they're, they're kind of able to social distance. If we have all the A B kids back together, they're going to have their masks off for that 15 minutes of continuous time with no way to pull them apart. So that's, I'm just, I know that Jane and the team will have that at the forefront of their mind. I just wanted to share as a parent and to other parents that that is where I am. And we, we want to hear your input. So thank you all.
Thanks, Stacy. I thought you were going to do a PSA for getting your flu shot. That's what I thought you were going to start with, so. Which you can still do. So, okay, Aster, we still can't see you in your quarter zip, but I'm guessing that you have it on. So I'm just going to put that in my mind, and it's your turn, if you have anything to report.
I'll send the group a picture.
Okay.
Later.
Do a selfie.
Yeah, yeah. Just a couple of things, thanks, Janelle, though. Just a couple of things. First, I'd like to say congratulations to the West High Football Team on their home playoff win against Fort Dodge. And wish them all the best as they travel to West Des Moines, Dalling this weekend to face that team. And just going off of what Dr. Lindeman said and her work with the counselors, I was pleased to receive an email today from my child's academic counselor at East High School outlining his academic planner, his four-year planner, and some of the things that he's expressed that he wanted to get into. And it sounds like the counselor is getting those things in place for him. As well as, I was pleased to see that Carbon Copy was his academic counselor for the upper bound program. So that lets me know that they're, that they're working together with that entity as well. And I see that, that gentleman reached out to the counselor. So I think that's important to have outside, outside organizations that are a benefit to our student success be in connection with each other, everybody be on the same page. So I was very pleased to see that today. With that being said, I'll make a public announcement about myself. I haven't told many people, but after 16 years, I'll be changing career paths. I've been at John Deere for 16 years currently. And as of Monday, the November 2nd, I'll be joined at the University of Northern Iowa Center for Urgent Education Talent Search Program and becoming an academic advisor and recruiter for that program. So I look forward to working in our community, as I have always been, and closely with the schools and the young people in our community. And hopefully that can be a benefit to that group. So just wanted to let everybody know and, and I appreciate all the well wishes and all the support I've received over the past few months, but I think it's time. So thank you all.
Congratulations, Aster. That is awesome. You are going to be fantastic in that role at Talent Search, and I'm really excited for you. Good for you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Can you see all of us clapping and snapping?
I can, I can.
I'm hoping that you can see us, even if you can't, we can't see you.
I can, I'm not sure what's going on with my, with my camera. It's saying it's on.
It's fine. It's fine. I just want to make sure you can see us all because that's awesome. Congrats, so.
I just didn't want to hold my phone up today.
You're good, you're good. So, all right, let's go around the horn. Let's see, it's Jessie next, right? Sue's not here, so it's Jessie. Where are you? There you are.
I really had nothing tonight, so I don't know if it's nice to see everybody and hope everybody is doing well.
Thanks, Jessie. And India. Thanks, Jessie. And India.
I just wanted to mention to all those students who took their tests for ACT last week, to all the adults and teachers who are involved, you know, as we all know, we're in a different climate and just so be in that mindset to even take that test. I'm glad that you guys did it. I'm glad the council were on the move for all those who needed extra help. So I just received a lot of great feedback and just getting that prepared. So it was on Saturday, excuse me, that they took that test. And so I just want to give a big shout out to all the organizers for the ACT test. That's always a big move. You know, there are still some chapters that we are trying to accomplish as a school district, you know? Even though it seems like sometimes we're in a time warp, but ACT tests are still happening and other things. And so I just want to give congratulations to those who all participated in that and made it worthy for students to be able to take.
Awesome. Thank you, India. I know that those test dates were actually added pretty late, you know, after. And so I think that's, that's a huge testament to the district that we got them added as well. So that people didn't have to go to Cedar Rapids or Tripola or wherever to take them. So kudos, yeah, for sure. So, and I really don't have anything. I guess my last thing is I'm going to do my own PSA that to just remind everyone that you have a civic duty in, next week on Tuesday to please vote. So if you don't know, there's an election I might, that I might have to be worried about you for. But I don't care who you vote for. It's just important that you exercise your right to vote. It is a huge right and it's a responsibility in this country. So I just want to get, get out the vote on Tuesday. So. Or you can go down to the courthouse and vote now. So. But with that, if there's nothing further to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submit.
Jessie, thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, India. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye. Aye, chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Have a good night and don't forget to tune in at seven.